There we go.
All right, so I'm Paul Shiner. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board. It's now seven oh four P M on the eighteenth of December twenty twenty-three. We have a couple items on the agenda here. The first one is approving minutes. I assume folks have read the minutes better than I did just now.
Uh, yeah, so the only thing that I saw was Shiner for Sherman.
Yeah.
And yeah, Sherman Street.
All right, so do we get a motion with corrections on that one? That is the September twenty-fifth meeting.
Okay, and make a motion to accept the minutes of the September twenty-fifth twenty twenty-three meeting of the zoning board of appeals with the change that uh Shiner Street Ave, whatever it is, be changed to Sherman Street.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All right, so that passes. Then the other one?
I saw no. I didn't see any thing that needed to be changed.
All right, do we get a motion to approve the November twenty-seventh?
I'll move to approve the November twenty-seventh minutes.
All right, we get a second.
Second.
Any comments? No comments. All in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimous as well. And of course, Bill, I made a mistake. A virtual meeting, we can't do a verbal roll call. We have to do a by roll call approval. So yeah, those are just minutes, so I think we can get away with it. But let's let's introduce folks. Jerry?
Um, yeah, member of the zoning board. Sorry, thank you.
So yeah, Brad Schultz, um, alternate member?
Paige?
Um, Paige, the PA Vice Chair and alternate.
John?
John Corville, member of the zoning board.
And Leslie.
Leslie Bryant, member of the zoning board.
Okay, so that's the cast of characters. We have both voted on both minutes to approve. So now we're on to the the main event. So we're holding a public hearing for Riverside Park Maynard, special permit application filed by Dominic Oh, McConachy for Riverside Park Maynard. The applicant is requesting a special permit to extend the existing front setback nonconformity in order to construct in addition to the residence. So the applicant, please, Dominic, you're on there somewhere, right? Yeah, there you are.
Yeah.
So describe what you want.
Um, okay, could I share my screen and show some?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make it so you can share a screen. One second here. All right, you should be able to share it, Dominic.
Great. Um, okay, you should, can you all see that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so yes, I got a, I got a few slides here, um, just to walk through the the proposal. Um. So yes, as you said, this is, you know, um, the application for the special permit. Um, just to orient you in relation to where where this property is, um, the town of, this is a nap of men, obviously, and then here's the property down in the um um southwest corner. Uh, this is for Riverside Park. Um, so you can zoom in on that, and here's the the um, the property, so just, you know, the river. There's the Aspen River rail trail on here, um. And then this is the house where we proposing to have the addition um added on. Um, so just a a map of the property um in terms of the survey. So these, it's five, these five lots down here that form the property of Riverside Park. And um, here's just an image of of the the property of the of the house over here on the corner of White Pond and Riverside Park Road. Um, so this is the the baseline um of the baseline survey that we had done. Um, this is by Stansky and McNary, and so a few things to point out here is um, so this is the the house where we wanted to have the addition added. Um, so this is the twenty-five foot setback from White Pond Road, the dotted line over here. And then the twenty-five foot setback from Riverside Park. Um. So you can see that the the setbacks run, you know, through the through the house, the house was built over a hundred years ago, so um, you know, prior to these laws. And um then there's White Pond Road, the Aspen River over here. And um, the rail tra, the cycle trails on the other side of Riverside Park. Riverside Park is a private road that services two houses um down east side, east side of us. Um. Yeah, so that's um, that's, and then also, so there's obviously the wetland, um, the river and and the associated wetlands. So that's what's shown here on this map is um, here you can see the hundred foot setback. And then the two hundred foot front area. So this is all kind of, you know, within the purvey of um, the the Conservation Commission. And um, so we haven't yet, this, none of this has gone in front of the Conservation Commission yet, but um that's obviously gonna, it needs to be factored in in any designs.
Say that again, please.
Just that we need to factor in the conservation land in relation to any proposed designs. What if we want to, you know, we want to, um, yeah. So um, so here we have the application, so um understanding that the adverse effects, the proposal, we're not outweighed beneficial impacts the town or the neighborhood um in terms of the zoning section. So we, during this, we looked at, um, so you know, so the first thing is just to look at the um the current property is S one zoning. So we have, we have a pass, a barn, and a screen room on the property, so we add about thirteen hundred square feet, which is about two point six percent of the total land area. Um, and we we proposing that the addition will grow up to about two thousand four hundred square feet of of footprint. So about a four point eight percent of the total land area. So um, you know, so we 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 increasing the land utilization and aligning a property with building cover, building coverage with the neighborhood. Um, this, and also the 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 square footage of livable space with the neighborhood. So in terms of the adverse impacts, um, you know, so we started, we started off the baseline and looked at a couple of different scenarios to try and mitigate any adverse impacts. Um. And because of the wetland area and the location of the property on the corner of the house on the corner, um, you know, there are a couple of kind of challenges associated with that. You know, so we looked at um, an addition on the um west side of the the property, which um, you would be, tells these beautiful views of the river over here. Um. So obviously, the adverse impacts here is that you're getting closer to the wetland buffer zone. Um, and also White Pond is a public road. So there's, you know, um, yeah. Uh, we also looked at having an addition on the um, the north side of the house. And in the scenario, you also have, you know, you, the the wetland buffer zone, both on the north and the west side. Um, we've also considered just kind of, you know, demolishing the current house and then moving the building a new house and somewhere that would be well away from the, you know, the setbacks. Um, but obviously, they also, you know, um the environmental kind of aspect of that in relation to the wetlands.
Say that one again, please.
Just the 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 adverse impacts of building a new house in relation to the wetlands. So um, what we're proposing is is um, what you see on this chart over here. Um, we're proposing an addition that would go out on the east side of the house. And then um, on the north side of the house as well, there would be some living area and then a screen porch. Um. But so you can obviously see that we we moving closer to to the um you know, we we were within the setback. And so that's why we require the special permit in order to do this work. Um. So just to zoom in on the house, you can see if you, this is the, um, you know, the the great old area is the existing house with the deck, and there's a dining room and a kitchen and and a living room here. Um, you can see here, the dotted line is the twenty-five foot setback of the property. So you know, going right through the middle of the house. Um, and then here's the proposed addition. Um. With the, in relation to the the property line. So you can see there's a one foot six inch um, distance between the property line and the house here, and a ten inch over here with this deck. Um, and then just to to close out, that's a footprint of the current house is about fifteen hundred, oh, sorry, one thousand one hundred and fifty-six square feet. We'll be pushing that up to about one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three feet. And the total floor area would go from one thousand six hundred square feet to about two thousand seven hundred square feet. Um, and then we just have two more charts of um this is showing, this is Riverside Park Road rounding down here. These are our two neighbors that Riverside Park services. Uh, and just got a line here showing where the addition would would lie. And then zooming in on that, um the Riverside Park, this is the cycle, the rail trail, and so the addition would be. Um, so that's, that's the material I had, um, I had to share this evening. Thanks, um, thanks for your time.
Dominic, um, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question real quick?
Real quick, yes.
Dominic, are you working with the Conservation uh Commission now?
No, I I not, we haven't gone in front of them yet, um, but we did speak, we spoke to them um about, you know, where might be better to build.
Right, so I mean, Julia worked with you on this particular.
Yeah, yeah, she's aware of this, and yeah.
All right, thank you.
So Dominic, I have a a few questions, just to clarify some things I'm confused on. You're proposing from that map, a one foot setback from the Riverside Road?
That's correct, yeah.
What is the current setback that's used? How far back is that corner of the house?
The current, the, it's about, uh, I'd say it's about ten feet. Um, I haven't actually got that measurement on here.
So it's six foot now, is that what you're saying?
Uh, may, I'd say probably ten feet.
Ten feet.
Yeah.
Is that a private road?
Yes.
And does that, uh, I wonder how that factors into our decisions, whether a road is public or private?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, Leslie, but my my thought is it's is property line that we're dealing with. And is it a front setback because it's a road, or is it a side setback because it's not a public road? That, that's where I'm struggling on that one. And another thing that you had in your presentation is you called it the neighborhood average. What is the neighborhood average?
Um, I was referring to the um, the paved surface of the, you know, the 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 paved surface of the property. So at the moment, we we have um the 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 buildings on the property at, uh, uh, cover two point six percent of the area. And for an F S one zoning in Maynard, my understanding is that it's fifteen percent that you're allowed to go up to. Um, and the neighborhood on average is is well about two point six percent, you know, it's it's, I think it's closer to.
Well, if you had that number, I'd love to have it, because I can't get it.
Yeah, and there's some backup material, like I looked at a couple of neighbor, of neighboring houses to see what their utilization was.
Yeah, it's 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 a side issue. I'm I'm just curious, because I I have another zoning issue I'm struggling with, not your property, something else, and if I could get those averages, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I couldn't find it on the website, but I was able to calculate it for a few houses.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And then someplace in your text, you also said the beneficial impact to the town. What is that?
So yeah, that's what I was proposing in relation to this um, the utilization of the, you know, the land um in terms of that we would be going up from two point six percent you know, of of building on the land to four point eight percent. Um, so that would, you know, so that's increasing the land utilization.
And you think that's the beneficial impact to the town?
Yeah, I think that the town, it's it's a benefit to the town to have additional housing.
Okay. And the other, the other question I got at the moment, and I'll probably have more later on, but the 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 other question I have right now is you went through the one where you demolished the house and put it in the middle of the lot, and you said you didn't like that. Why not that option versus the the one that you said you're preferring?
Well, yeah, we're talking to Julia about this, and um, you know, there's obviously the, this was the wetland issue. So there's, you know, that because this is an environmentally sensitive property, um, you know, there's, there's, there's a, there are adverse impacts to any kind of development.
Okay, but what you are favoring is very similar to what you've got here as far as impact, right?
Uh, no, because we are moving away from the wetlands, so this is, so this would be a, you know, a new house that would be within the wetland area and then also um yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at that map as well, and you're crossing over that same dotted line with your your favorite option.
Well, there's, this is building on existing, um, this, the dotted line is all, um there's already a deck over here. So it would be no additional, um you know, disruption to the to the land.
You're gonna dig a foundation, aren't you?
Uh, yeah.
So it's the same as if it's in the middle of the property versus right uptight there. That's, yeah, that's what I'm struggling. It, to me, it looks like it's the same impact that you're, you're gonna be disturbing the topsoil to put in your structure wherever it is.
Yeah, Julia was saying that um, her concern is is also the 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 rainwater runoff in terms of the flooding risks. Um, so and um obviously, a deck is, they were talking, you know, on the Conservation Commission, when is, you, my understanding is that the the deck is something in between, it's not you know, it's not impervious, but it's not, you know, um, so yeah, I I think the fact that we are going on the deck is, for them is 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 less impact than.
Oh, okay, so where you got your mouse, that's not gonna be a foundation, that's just a deck.
That will be, that there will be, this will be a, there will be, there will be half of it would be um, deck and half of it would be um living area.
All right, so you are gonna dig the foundation there.
Yeah, and it's, it's gonna be a slab foundation, it's not gonna be, uh, but yeah, there will be a foundation over there.
Okay. So I've inquired enough for a moment, uh, anyone else wants to ask questions? John, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a question. Uh, are you on Townsor, or do you have septic? Because I wonder if moving the septic system would also have an impact uh, on the conservation.
It's septic.
Okay.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Leslie, any questions?
No, it's a lovely house that I wanted to buy myself, actually, and I would hate to see it torn down. That's my comment. Um. If yeah, I would, I would really hate to see that house torn down and then something new built instead. Um. But yeah, I wonder about it getting so close to Riverside Park, for one thing. Um, I'm less concerned about um turning the deck into uh, living quarters.
Paige, any questions?
I'm just a little confused. Is that front setback changing from the current ten feet? Because the the table on the staff report I see it's proposed zero, so that's not change, it's just that the setback is basically going down to zero. I think I was just misinterpreting the staff report.
Yeah, I probably could, I was looking at that, I I could have done that a little better, but yeah, it's, it's right.
So it is going from ten to almost, to like between zero and one.
Yeah, I I measured it was about ten to about zero.
Okay, no, that that's helpful.
So does that mean we can give them about a special permit? So Jerry, any questions?
Yeah, m- mine is the same, uh, no, mine is the same as Leslie's, except, no, I was not ever planning on buying that house. But the, but the closest to Riverside Park, it it you know, I mean, I I don't have a problem with it being that close, except then there's a restriction on that Riverside Park, you know, roadway, a driveway, you know, unaccepted, non-town road. Nothing can ever be done to that, because there's a house sitting a foot from it. So that roadway will be restricted for any you know, upgrade, I would say, in future years. That's just my thoughts. That's my one concern.
So who'd I miss? Brad?
Yeah.
You always have questions.
Sure, uh, where is the um, where's the septic system located now on that property?
Yeah.
Um. It's about over, the the tank is about here, and the leach field is somewhere down here.
So is it sitting in the buffer zone, the wetlands buffer zone?
I'm not actually sure of the answer to that. Um, I have the septic schematic, but it's not on this survey.
Okay, and what's the septic um set for? How many uh bedroom house?
Um, it's a three-bedroom septic.
Three bedrooms, so, okay.
And what do you want to make the house into? Is it into three-bedroom?
Yeah, we're proposing to do it, to to have a three-bedroom.
Just curious, um, are you keeping the same general architectural style?
We um we 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 obviously are very sensitive to, you know, the fact that it is a beautiful, we also, I think it's a beautiful house, um. We, we, we kind, we, 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 we thinking of potentially um having somewhat of a kind of a, is a a slightly more modern, kind of look to the addition um, to kind of, and we've seen some examples of this. So um, so it may look a little, the addition may look a little different.
Mm-hmm.
One more question. So, don't, why the suggestion for slide fourteen? The one on slide twelve looks like it would have the the least amount of impact uh, for an addition, and I'm just wondering why you uh, not the whole, yeah, that one. Why would you, why would you rule out this one as like a a lesser option?
Um. So the, so this one has um there's the, 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 um the distance to the, the wetland buffer zone is, is it's is moving towards the wetland buffer zone, both on the north and the and the west.
Gotcha.
Hmm. But there's already a a deck there, um, but the deck is towards the back part of that. Um. Proposed addition.
Yeah, yeah, the deck is, the deck is over here.
Yeah. That would probably satisfy us more, but be more of a problem with cons come.
All right, that's obviously, it solves a lot of the setback issues that, yeah.
No, it definitely does.
I would just add that, um, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
So this, so the the other thing is that this is also White Pond Road, which is a public road, and so there's you know, there's, there's a significantly more view from, you know, people walking past and that kind of thing, so there is also some benefit of going back um, in terms of the characteristic, character of the house from the road.
So what is your setback from the White Pond Road now?
It's twenty-five to both roads. And what is the, what is, you're asking, what is this distance?
What's existing, yeah.
Uh, again, I actually don't know, but it it looks at about, also about ten, I would say. Or maybe it is on here, yeah, it's ten, yeah, it is on there, it's ten feet.
Because one thing we struggle with is when we're dealing with uh, changing the setback for an addition, to extend a current setback is usually easier than to create an, or or nonconformity, than create a new nonconformity. And putting it on the Riverside Park and bringing it down just about to zero is huge relative to where the house is now. Compared to just continuing that dotted line along, I I assume that's the front of the house there, we got those little stairs and porch in this current showing that you got on the screen. So that that's just my own opinion, that it's easier to deal with that. Now, I know Bill's gonna argue the setbacks don't matter, because you're asking for a special permit rather than a variance. But I still say that a variance criteria are important in considering those.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um. The buffer zone from White Pond, I mean, White Pond Road is in the middle of a buffer zone. And a road is certainly gonna be a lot more of a problem to the wetlands um, than, you know, just a just a lot, you know, a a piece of land with grass and and whatever to it, so more or less throw out the idea that um, building into the buffer zone along White Pond Road is more of an environmental impact, I think it's um, doesn't make any difference, because White Pond Road is gonna be the culprit for any kind of environmental damage to the wetlands. All the stuff that comes off of the roads and, you know, the runoff and everything like that.
And just remember, that was rebuilt very recently, too.
Mm-hmm.
The the difference is in this area, I think, is that they um are help, are hoping that that area uh filters and recharges as well. I I'm not, I haven't been to the Conservation Commission, that would be my initial thought.
That the road is going to recharge?
No, no, that that decreasing impervious uh surface over in that area. So they're thinking that the more that they lose to um, a structure would, I I, that would be my guess.
I think compared, I think in that particular part of the buffer zone, can the amount of um that they want to cover, that would be impervious, is minute compared to what the road already does. I can't imagine that that should even be, you know, a consideration, but.
Well, well, they have to have a framework to work within for the conservation.
Sure.
They can't just, you know, the road is there.
Right, and the performance standards apply regardless, the riverfront area performance standards apply, and as part of that kind of application, I'll need to provide an alternatives analysis that justifies why they're proposing what they're proposing, but I don't want to, I just want to tread carefully. I know we do need to consider the impacts on the environment as one of our criteria, but I'd want to be careful that we're not necessarily overstepping and reaching into the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. I really appreciate this alternative analysis, but it is difficult to opine on, because I feel like it's a lot of it is premised on wetland impacts and avoiding them, which isn't necessarily exactly our jurisdiction.
I I agree with you, Paige, and I looked at it, and I says, can we, can we do anything that is impacting these dotted lines? And I don't think the zoning And I don't think the zoning board can rule on anything that impacts those dotted lines.
Is there any chance um, of taking some of the. House that's going to be very close to Riverside Park and kind of tacking it onto the. Part of the house that's like not a problem at all. That um, the side that's towards the, the river? Like just redoing the, the plan of the house?
Yeah, we've been working with an architect and um. And this is really the um. I think, I mean, we, we've looked at a bunch of different options and um, I mean, it's, it's, I think it's obviously technically feasible. In terms of the plan that we're proposing, I think this, we thought that this would satisfy kind of the, you know, the impact versus the benefit. Um, so this is the one that we, we, we're proposing.
And the way I'm looking at it, I would like to consider, since Riverside Park is a private road, I would consider that not. A frontage, but a side yard issue. So that takes it from twenty-five down to fifteen feet. And you say the house at that pointy corner is down about ten feet from this, from the, yeah, that where the mouse is. And so. I'm wondering if you can do something that keeps it at that ten-foot level. And not any closer to the side yard. Just because, as, as I think it was Jerry, you were saying that, you know, that conflicts any future activities on that side road. But to bring it down that close, you can't even get a snowplow through there without throwing snow on the house.
Exactly, that's my concern.
That's assuming it's plowed at some point.
Yeah, it, it's, it's plowed, it is plowed, um. So it's, it's plowed, um, so that the. We obviously, you know, I, the, the, in terms of, it would, it would, it would make this kind of coming out this way would. It would, in terms of the, what we need from the, the addition. It would, to, we, we looked at, you know, trying to keep it within that, you know, not going further than ten feet or. And moving out to the west wouldn't give us what we need from the addition, doing that. We've, my, my understanding of Riverside Park is also, you know, it's a, it's a private road that services two additional houses down the way. Um, you know, it's. It's um, it runs down, down here and they, this is, you know, our, our two neighbors who, who it services. And then beyond that, there is a river, so it's, you know, so it's not, it's not a road that is going to be um, expanded. At any point, it can't be expanded. Um, so these are the three houses that it will service. Um, so I think, I mean, that was also a consideration of for us to move towards Riverside Park as opposed to, you know. Um, and then, you know, that it's, it's, it's a road that is, services of three houses. Um. There's also, you know, so currently it's a very, it's a very small road, the, 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 it's, it's. It's mapped out at forty feet of, of, of land that is, um, you know, that, that is the road. But you can see on this map that the road runs here, um, I think our, somebody at some point built this fence that is actually. Appears to me to be over the property line, but, um, you know, so the addition would come out here, which is. In relation to where the road currently is, it's um. It's a good distance from the, the, from Riverside Park Road currently is in relation to where the addition will be. Um, so for, so it seemed like it, it would be not such a, you know. That they really know, I don't see really any negative impacts for, on, on the private road, um. In relation to what we're proposing would be adverse impacts from other, other options.
So, Dominic, you drew that yellow line on this picture. And I'm confused what that means because your outline of the house, that you proposed addition. Goes beyond the footprint of the house and you're showing it in line with the house.
This is in line with the house, but um, did you see the orientation here, you know, the house?
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, but then you have that little box out there.
Yeah, then there's another box out here, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So let me ask a general question of, of the board here. And that is, can we make any kind of a decision on this? Without having the conservation folks telling us what we're allowed to do?
I don't think so, that's my opinion. Eh, from everything I heard tonight.
I, I think we should um, be able to say that um, we could approve something um, after, or pending a review from the Conservation. Committee. And um, I'd also like to see um. A survey of the land to see where, where the road, Riverside Road actually is and where the house is. On the property, because it seems to be a little bit ambiguous as to where. These lines are and how much buffer space, I mean, there is, if you were going to build in one foot of your property line. There's a property line go right up to Riverside Park Drive, or is there, you know, a setback or, you know, an easement for. Telephone poles or, you know, sidewalks or like that.
Yeah, and, and along with that, uh, Brad, you're asking good questions and I, and I'm wondering. On this being a private road, who's paying the taxes on it? Is, is it an association or is it uh? Uh, a right-of-way concept, I mean, what, what is the situation of that? If, if it could be expanded, you know, and paved and made into a public highway, who, who benefits, who loses on something like that? I just don't understand this one.
Right.
Isn't this a stand, um, this survey was stamp Sam McNary, wasn't it? Or you have one in here?
Yeah, this is the survey, five times.
Yeah, I agree, I do think it'd be helpful to get a better understanding of. Is the road itself currently forty feet wide or is that the layout and is the actual existing road? Only twenty feet of that.
It's, it's likely where the property line is and the road is just wandering sometimes closer to one boundary and sometimes to the other.
Yeah, you can see here is the road, um. And in relation to where the addition would be, so, so this, this point here technically is close to the property boundary. And so you can see that then beyond that is this fence and then the telephone poles running down electricity lines running here. And then a small gravel road over here. Um, and then the cycle trail over here.
So this, this river, um. River Park is essentially, it's, the three houses on, on here, oh, you can't see mine, but there's, there's a three house, there's a driveway to the three houses, basically, right?
Exactly, that's correct, yeah.
So how did the, I, I, I missed something here that the board is saying, board, did you ask, is it public access to it?
No, I'm just reflecting on it, if, if this is a private road.
Yes.
And is, is it a right-of-way situation or is there an owner of this private road? Or is the town just acknowledged that it's a town road, but they're not going to pave it or, or plow it?
The town does, did not acknowledge it's a town road, it's a, it's a private road. Um, so the, the, a town, for a town to accept a road. Uh, it would have to be petitioned, there'd have to be, it'd have to be built to a certain standard, there'd have to be a reason the town would want to have it. Uh, and then it'd have to go to town meeting, when we do.
If, if it is indeed then a private road, who owns? Is it a right-of-way shared by those three properties?
It, it would probably have its own deed.
And somebody's paying taxes on it.
Well, we can look at that way you're doing this, I can look at that, that should be easy enough. Uh, y- yeah, presumably somebody would be paying that taxes on it, right?
So is a, if, if a road is not um, approved or adopted by the town, that automatically make it a private road? Or is there a difference between uh, unapproved? Town road and a private road?
No, the town is. The, the. As you've probably seen every town meeting, you know, the uh, subdivisions or, or individual committees. Will petition the town to accept a road because of the services. You know, like the plowing because of the maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. Because of that, when we have a subdivision, uh, built, or we have a um. Uh, a road that's going to be potentially accepted by the town, it has to be built to a standard. And it's typically done in coordination with DPW, we don't want to accept. They're not looking to accept roads in general, because it is additional maintenance. Uh, but if they do accept it, they want when it's built to um, the, the DPW standards.
Okay, so I, I guess my question is, if it's not a unaccepted road.
Right.
Then it's not, it's not owned by the town, it's, it's automatically, is it private? For instance, the example, I want to, uh, talk about, say, a Ozec Road. Where a section of it is town-approved and a section of it is not town-approved. And so the part that's not town-approved. Um, or accepted by the town, is that private land? Or is it?
Typically, but I, I could, typically, but I could think of some cases where there wouldn't be, but typically.
So getting back to, to my train of thought here, if it is not a public way. It's not a property with frontage, it's a side, side yard. And so now we're looking at a fifteen-foot setback requirement rather than a twenty-five-foot setback requirement. And that's as far as I can get. We're still struggling with the conservation challenges. And I don't think, and I'm, I'm getting it just from the others, that I don't think we can make any decision on something that's going to conflict with the conservation's. Jurisdiction.
Anything that's done, um. That requires another board's approval. Is done with it as a condition, so we've, you've seen it where we've brought things from the planning board to you and vice versa. Um, and if it turns out that it is. Um. A contingent, that'll be noted.
Because, you know, thi- this is a unique case because he's offering us different options. And he's, he's saying one that he would prefer, but that might not be the one that we recommend or approve. Because the simplest one for us, with all the setbacks and so forth, would be the new house concept. Second to that would be the one that only gives you that one setback continuance, rather than pushing another setback down to zero. But all of those, you know, we, if we say approve. Version A, B, or C, we'd only have to approve one, I don't want to write a blank check here.
You know. I'm also looking at, let me see here.
I agree, I think you should choose one, but then let us make a decision on it.
Yeah, agreed.
What, wasn't, if I'm not mistaken, weren't you asking for the one facing Riverside Park after?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was choice number two.
This is the one that, I'm, the, the one, yeah, facing Riverside Park is, is what I'm asking for. Sorry, that wasn't clear, that's um.
And, and this is the one that, that I am uncomfortable with because the setback goes down to zero.
Correct, that's a, that's a problem, isn't it?
Yeah.
What's the purpose of the setback on that side?
What do you mean by what's the purpose, Bill?
Well, I would, in other words.
Yeah.
When we do, yeah, I mean, in this case, we're talking about what's essentially a private driveway. Uh, you're not talking about frontage, I, I would think that the, the, the idea of a setback. Is to en- ensure separation from adjacent properties, in this case, it's moot. Um, I think that this is a, a, a private road that. I'm looking up, I don't have the owner, it didn't have the ownership on it, so it, it looks like it, it would. I'm not positive, but looking at the uh. The aerial view, it looks like to extend the road where it was, it would have to go further, would have to go through private land. I'm, I, looking at some of the overheads now, but.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure.
You run out of land, you run into that bay.
You have to go on a private property, so to me, the intent, I mean, my opinion, if you're asking, is, is that. The uh, the purpose of setback is to protect from adjacent properties, there's not many adjacent properties here. The impact on the um, that, that's the least. Impact on the environmental situation and it enhances the property in a way that um. You know, uh, leaves the majority of that property as conservation, uh, resource area. So I would say that the purpose of setbacks is not, to me, my thing is not the issue, it's not like it's an aesthetic thing, it's not like it's a. A safety thing.
You're speaking as a member of the public here?
Who me?
Yeah.
No, I'm speaking as planning director.
Ah, okay, just wanted to get sure.
We do have one public here, we do have a member of the public here, I think.
So does Nat, Natalie, you've been hearing us, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, I.
Got a, a, a dress, uh, could you tell us who you are?
Sorry, I, I don't, am I just, I'm just a citizen right now, right?
Whenever you want to be.
I, I'll just be Natalie Robert, Forty-Eight Summer Street, citizen, um. No, I have been listening and I understand the concerns about, you know, your primary directive is not conservation, right? But at the same time, looking at the possible alternatives, I just feel like. The. It would be worth it to have the negative impacts. Face the roads, in my opinion, as opposed to facing the river, right? We're doing so much to try and conserve the river. Deal with wetlands, deal with flood zones. In my mind, going towards the road, especially a road, I mean Riverside. Park does have more space between it and the rail trail, so if someday, yes, for some reason it was decided to be incorporated as a proper road. There, it's not like there isn't space that is town-owned land, in terms of if you wanted to make it its full forty feet, which it definitely is not. I mean, it sits probably somewhere squarely in the middle of that forty-foot measurement at a much narrower distance, so. In my mind. I understand why setbacks exist and they're, they're important, but at the same time, it is a setback to a private road and there is. Space, we're not dealing with a cramped, cramped neighborhood, you know, like it's, it's a different situation and. I'd, I'd rather go towards the roads than the rivers, that's all.
Which road?
Uh, meaning Riverside Park. Another thing is, I realize the White Pond Road is obviously already a huge. You know, detriment to being in the wetland buffer zone, but that's why we want to keep other things out of it, right? We already have to have this road there, so we try and keep what we can choose to keep out of it. Going the other direction, so.
Thank you. So we've heard from the only other person in the meeting who's not involved in the discussion as a board member. So. I, I'm sort of at a loss here, guys. What do you want to do?
I, I have to say that I have never seen any outcome that has been good. When there's a house which sits on a road, whether it's a private road, uh, or otherwise. Um, I can tell you how many times I've been repairs the houses over and over, that have sat on roads which are hardly ever used. You know, usually it's a garage that's sitting there, that gets hit by either the um. Snowplow, or it's some kid, you know, driving up and down the street recklessly. Or it's a neighbor who just wasn't paying attention and, and veered off and. And, and smacked into it, or sometimes it's a um, a truck, a moving truck or something that comes down the street. Um, we just, that, putting the house right on a road, even if it's a private way, um, is. Not a good thing.
Isn't that a, isn't that a concern for us to, to decide on, you know, that we, that we're going to be taking that risk, that's not a risk for the town?
Hmm, I don't, no, I don't think that's, um, I don't think that's true, I think we, that's something that we should consider. And as part of a protective zoning bylaw, I think we should be using it to protect the. Public and the uh, interest of the, of the homeowner.
Well, I agree with Bill, that, that um. In the spirit of uh, why we have. Uh, side yard setbacks is kind of a, a non-entity, not a problem with this one. Um, and he does only have two neighbors. Um and he does only have two neighbors and. Um I don't see that. I'm up and down this area all the time on my bicycle and walking and I never. Almost never see anybody. Traveling on that road anyways, because there are just the two um. I like the fact that um if they. Did the proposed um addition that they would not be disturbing the. Um historic architecture of the neighborhood. Um and it is a neighborhood that has houses that um all date to the same period. And we're losing them all over town. Um. And I don't see that it will impact. Uh you know, like going down our list of six things, I don't see any issue. That this negatively uh would impact. It uh the way he has it proposed.
So just a quiz on that, Leslie, having a zero setback from the property line doesn't bother you?
In this case, it doesn't.
What what about the property next door?
Can I share a screen, Mr. Chair?
Their their frontage is, their their only frontage is on that road, correct?
Yeah.
So can they build out to the road as well? And the and the and the house all the way down, can they pull out to the road as well?
That's a good point, because that's what we're considering. So we're we're having a debate here on on screen sharing, so Bill is stealing the screen share here.
Yeah, just showing you where we're at here. Let's look at, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so here's Riverside, here is where the the last house is there.
Alright.
Fourteen, and then here, this is this is conservation land um owned by Department of Environmental Protection. This is the rail trailer here, of course, open space here, DPW here, open space. So, you know, you, this is um.
Refuge is in there somewhere.
What's that?
Doesn't the refuge, isn't that the green?
The green is open space, yeah, it it's uh that this is the.
Refuge, yeah.
Ask about, yeah, that the refuge, right? So I mean, it's not. Well, you can see, it's um, this is what we're talking about here.
Phil, is there a way I can just try on my computer too, but to put on the aerial so we can see where the other houses are in relation to the?
I think I can.
Yeah, you did it there, I think, yeah.
Let me just find it. Um. Where is it on here?
I was trying to find it also and I did not.
It's it's on here.
Hiding, it's not in your normal place.
Oh, there we go, here we go, look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um which one is the?
I think it's GIS. No, cancel that.
Oh, wait, it might make a minute, might take a minute, no. Alright, that one, this is a new one, um property map, this is on.
You got a scroll down bar, is he down at the bottom right there? Is there anything else hiding?
No, not mine there.
Yeah.
Let's see here, this.
Oh, you know what? I just found it. If you click on the three lines on the right side of your screen above the plus.
Over on the right side, yeah.
Yeah, those, hit that and then. Up at the top. I just figured that out.
Well, thank goodness you're here.
I don't, I don't know if it's working.
You know, probably better with Google Earth, but that's.
Okay, we got it. Why did we want it?
I just care, like interested in how close to the road the other house, the two other properties on this road. Uh for.
There's one and there's the.
They have decent decent-sized yards leading up to their houses.
Let's see if Google Earth is a little better.
I think that's the helicopter view there. Space shuttle view.
Yeah, right.
I see Elon up there.
Well, maybe, well, in the meantime, I we can go back to this, I'll I'll go and.
So, is there any chance of having the plans redrawn so that? I don't know, five, six feet of of that living space is placed on the other side?
Um. We've, we have, um, we've, you know, we've been working with an architect, we've to 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 design with the the property proposing. So that's, you know, it's really, we've already invested quite a lot of this project and um if it's. If they, if you think that it's feasible to approve, you know, the the. The special permit as we're proposing it, that would be. Um, you know, it it makes, it's it's makes, it's it makes more sense both in terms of the design of the house for for me and my family. And also in terms of, you know, the path we've already been down. Um.
Yeah.
My understanding is that, you know, so the the adverse impacts in terms of the wetlands in relation to any kind of variance or or. Getting closer to that, the the property boundary, um but they've been kind of minimal to no impacts in terms of the. Being closer to the property boundary, um suppose so.
Well, years ago, we used to regularly do uh field trips in the middle of meetings. This was uh summertime, I would propose one right now.
I was just looking at Mass Mapper, which I know is not a definitive source of information, but looking at Mass Mapper, the Mass GIS website. The twelve Riverside Park parcel appears to have their building right at the property, right at the property line also right up against.
The caution there on all of these mapping programs is. The 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 error tolerance in drawing a line versus what the picture is showing. Because those lines can move quite a bit. If if you look at the program that Bill had up first. Uh el- elsewhere in the town, they're drawing the property line through the buildings.
Yeah.
Just because they they couldn't get those to line up properly.
Hmm.
And so it's it's almost, you know, you need to have a, you know, a a tape measure survey by a surveyor to. Show where those edges really are.
Well, yeah, we, the town will require for any uh building permit, will require a survey. You know, the 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 demonstrates, because you're right, the 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 depicted lines are not always correct.
I think where I I was going is in terms of community character, her neighborhood character, it feels like those, at least on that one parcel, it is. The neighbor is also really close to the road. Um so I I think I'm more in Leslie's camp in that. Personally, this is a road that only serves two other parcels and can't really be extended to serve anything else. Since the only other parcel is owned by DCR and then it's essentially, there's no more land. Um so thinking of it more in terms of a driveway than a major thoroughfare, I don't necessarily have the. I don't love that there's a zero setback, but it's not. A huge red flag for me in this one context, given the specific facts.
So, Mr. Chair, just a quick question.
Sure.
Can can we take a look at the criteria that we need to move on? I think there are six points, or thereabouts.
You'll leave that up or should I move it on?
I could put it on, let me do that.
And if we do that, I mean, how many of those points do we think right now as a as a committee we could approve? And then find out what is the one or two points that are potential stumbling blocks for us at the moment?
I looked at them and I think they all fly.
Okay, alright, I just.
But we should go through them.
No, that's, again, you pre- preface that too with the fact that any decision we make, and I think, I think Bill, you mentioned that. Uh anything we do uh obviously needs to be approved by the Conservation Commission. Okay, we're approving on our vantage, on our view only. We're not looking at the wetlands and 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 other things that they might be considering. Uh so, I I was, go ahead.
I I I agree with you, but as, you know, I was chatting with Bill ahead of this meeting. And the challenge here is without being allowed to look at variance requirements, you know.
Yeah.
Uh you know, the setback, you're going from ten feet to zero or whatever. Without having that as a criteria in Maynard, literally every zoning request we get should pass.
Yeah.
Because we have.
Yeah, I don't, I don't totally, I I I don't think that's exactly correct, Paul, in that. If there is an existing nonconformity, what the ruling has said is that that nonconformity. Can be extended by special permit. It does, it no longer requires a variance. If there's a property that is conforming in, only in the aspect that's that is uh being proposed to improve. So if a property right now is conforming in other areas, it would require a variance to create a new nonconformity.
Jerry, can you go to num- uh Jerry?
Oh, so Bill, I I have a question with that. So what we're saying is that the nonconformity, the current nonconformity is the front of the house. And you're extending that nonconformity down to the front lot line, so it's keeping that. Um less than ten foot, or I should say fifteen foot setback. Which is not the nonconforming part of this proposal. So it's the front of the house, or I'm sorry, the side that's on Riverside Drive Park.
Yeah.
That's the nonconformity side.
Right.
By extending that where we're, we're under the special permit.
Right, it could be anything though, you know, but you get the idea. So what what we're saying is that. If there's existing nonconformity. Um the the interpretation has is evolved into. If that nonconformity is extended, it is a a special permit as opposed to a variance.
The definition of extend, if you have a ten-foot. Issue in a setback, you can continue that ten-foot, the long the setback, still at ten foot. Versus what we're showing here, taking ten foot down to zero, that's an additional setback.
That is correct, and that is specifically what the case law has said. So it's exacerbating, it is exacerbating an existing nonconformity. But there is. No, it is not a variance, that was the change. So the variance.
Have, if you have a property that has a nonconformity, you can abuse that nonconformity down to zero anywhere. And that follows the new state ruling?
I I think that saying abuse is not, I don't think that's that's.
But that's what's happening.
I would put it this way, it provides a tool for people that were. In in some cases, applied a zoning district that didn't conform to their individual property. But I would say it's a remedy for that.
But I think what Paul's saying is, um with the special permit, you can um extend a current nonconformity. But uh which is not making it necessarily more nonconforming, other than. Um you know, so you're you're um keeping the nonconformity the same. So what Paul's saying is you're um you're changing the nonconformity. So it's it's more non, more nonconforming than it was before.
Correct. That is correct. Only on that nonconformity. If you have, like, for example, if there was a setback that was in, it was conforming currently, let's just say it was conforming. Right now.
Okay.
And the the petition before the board would be a variance request. It would not be a special permit request. That's.
I understand.
Because you're creating a conformity. You're creating a nonconformity under the variance criteria. Here.
A new nonconformity.
Since you have a nonconformity. Any one of those nonconformities, he could ask to take it down to zero, along White Pond Road or along the Riverside Road, he could take it down to zero.
And it's under a special permit, yeah.
Under a special permit.
Under special permit.
And that, and to me, that's an abuse of the rules.
Uh well, I don't, I don't, I you, I mean, I wouldn't characterize it like that, but.
So my question to you, Bill, have you talked to town council about this?
Yes, we have, we we we've, we've talked to town council.
About this case?
No. No, I don't talk to town council about every case. This is um, this was uh discussed uh strictly in-house, building commissioner and myself.
Because I'm I'm concerned about this one is not following the 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 spirit of the 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 special permit issue. That the the judicial department put together. The spirit of it would be to extend it, like if you were to build on that that White Pond side, the map that he had on White Pond. That's a continuation of the same setback. Here, he's pushing a new setback.
No, what what you're proposing, Paul, was the old law, for the old interpretation. That's what you're saying. So you're saying that the interpret, new interpretation. Exacerbating an existing nonconformity does not, you you don't agree with that, I understand that. Um but I'm I'm saying that it's being presented to you by me and by. You know, in in this case, the building commissioner, I had talked to town council.
That's why I'm asking about town council.
Yeah, no, I don't go to town council on every, on every.
Because I think on this one, I think we should get a legal interpretation of which law we're supposed to follow.
If that's what you want, you can continue it and I I'll send it to legal.
Sorry, Dominic, but this this is just a lot of stuff that we need to get clarified. Because we got the Conservation Commission and they're ruling on your on your wetlands. And we have this peculiarity in taking it down to a zero setback.
Right, but we can't, but but I I I don't want to just throw stuff at the wall and and and. And the Conservation Commission uh issue is not appropriate for this, this board um. Like you said, they can't run, that's not an issue, that can be conditioned on that. That's the the town council. Uh question, I'd be happy to if that's what the board's pleasure is. But um if if you wanna ensure that the interpretation is correct and that this would not be a variance, I could do that and you can kick it uh to the next meeting if we prefer. That's fine.
What's the side of the board here? Leslie?
Well, you already know that I don't have an issue with it, and we didn't go through the six things, by the way, and as. Um I was always led to believe that we are not a precedent-setting board. But if it would please you.
What is a precedent-setting board mean? Do you mean by that?
Meaning that if we grant somebody something, everybody else can't come and say, well, you gave them this, so you have me.
Yeah, right, so if we made that decision, um each, each um case, we pick individually, so there is no precedent.
Right.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Jerry, your thoughts?
Well, well, yeah, I was I was just gonna go the same place that. That that Leslie just mentioned, that we're not, we're we're not, but we are also at the same time setting a precedent. Because I I, at least to my knowledge, in the years I've been on here, I have not seen a setback go to. One foot or zero, uh that could be incorrect, but I think if we do this, then it just opens the door for others who. Are looking for something similar to come come to us. We might say we're not a precedent-setting board, but. Once we make this decision, if it gets accepted, we have effectively set a precedent, I think. Well, that's my interpretation.
I I have to disagree with that because I I think we need to, we could take it um individually. Uh so like, for instance, if the neighbors decided they wanna take down their house, and put their whole front, you know, on it, on one foot. You know, then we could easily say, I mean, it's, we don't have to look back and say, well, just because they stuck one corner of their house on it. You can, you know, can do the same. You know, so there's, we're not obligated to to any previous.
Yeah, but if they.
That this board makes.
Correct.
If we say that for a private road, we're considering a private road or driveway.
Right.
The house is on further up, and they wanna put it right on the driveway, do they need to come to the ZBA at all? They could just do it, right? That that's why I'm thinking the president comes in.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I I I just, to me, it, you know, I I deal a lot with condo associations and. And and rules and, you know, once you give to one thing, then doesn't mean you have to give to the next person. But it just opens Pandora's box. The next person will say, well, geez, you did it over there. Why can't I do it in my driveway? It's a private driveway, so tha- that's all. I'm just trying to make sure we.
We we do that, we do that all the time with the percentage of coverage. On these small lots, so I, you know. So we do have to take everything, you know, each.
Yep.
Everything by case by case.
Yeah, and that's an interesting point, Brad. This is not a small lot.
Yeah, no.
And and we're fighting setbacks because of where the building had been sat.
Right.
Hundred years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. It seems to me that there's, there's no need to have to put it. You know, one foot away, unless it's a financial hardship issue, but that's not one of our. One of the requirements for a special permit.
Well, just a just a reminder, can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Yeah, that that we're not looking for consistency with all of these. Um, components. What you're looking for is consideration of all of them. In the end, what you're trying to determine is do the adverse effects of the use. Uh. Not outweigh the beneficial impacts to the town and neighborhood. So they're just, those are tools that you're given to consider. So, you know, in this case, going down, I mean, we look at social, economic, and community needs. Well, I mean, you know, that would be whatever you think, traffic, parking, okay, you want to consider that, we actually considered this.
Bill, you should go up to number three, not five, cause it's number three is much more. Inclusive, or it's uh.
Whoopsie.
Yeah, whoops, you went by it.
No, no, it might, my mouse got in mind of its own.
There.
There we go. It's site-specific, um.
Yeah, I don't see that there's any. And in fact, building a new house would probably. Um. Hurt number four.
Does building an additional, just adding an additional footprint impact number five, though, since it's going to be within that. Hundred foot.
That's um, that that's, yeah, so we looked into that and then also that'll go in front of the Conservation Commission that um. That they'll obviously have to approve this.
So this gets back to my point here, setbacks are irrelevant if you follow the letter of these. It doesn't matter where you put the building on a property if you already have. Something that kicks its into special permit territory instead of a variance. It doesn't matter anything, you just do it, and that to me is not a proper way to interpret this.
But you have to consider these six points, and it's just in this particular instance. They they relatively little impact on these six points, but you could imagine. Many houses that there might be, you know, traffic impacts. If you're going right up to the lodge, you know, you don't want people coming here on the corner, that's dangerous for traffic. You know, it might be that there's utilities impacts in terms of, you know, the town has the. Some kind of sewer there or some something like that. There definitely a lot of cases, you could imagine that there are a lot of negative impacts. But in this particular case, I think it's, they're relatively few, which is, which is.
So I I'm still hung up on on is this really a special permit? Or do we need to take into consideration some of the requirements of of a variance? In allowing it to go beyond what the town set up in setting these setback requirements. And taking fifteen feet down, excuse me, ten feet down to zero for this property when the setback is either fifteen or twenty-five, depending on the column quality of that road. To me, that that is. A a significant issue to consider.
Yeah, I mean, I have to agree with you, Paul, because it seems to me that if it was a setback. That said, you're nonconforming, so you're at, you're nonconforming at ten feet. You can continue it on as long as it stays ten feet. It goes to, it changes to go to something else. Which it apparently it does because it's now in front of, it's it's not getting it closer, as you're saying, down to one foot. Then perhaps that isn't it.
Yeah.
Well, then, all all I, you know, like I said, I can check with legal. If you prefer, but I absolutely want to be crystal clear. This is from, you know, this was something that we we understood was a change in the interpretation. When we, when this happened last uh fall. And we've been over this. And.
Okay.
You know, it's up, it's whatever the board's um pleasures on this.
So so the, so the difference would be if. You wanted to stay with the one foot, zero, you know, zero, you know, um, change in the setback for that that corner. You'd have to come back with variance, and then we'd be here doing the same exact thing, but with the variance instead.
And if he stayed at ten feet. Then to me, that's the special permit phraseology.
But you're, but that that's not, and and I understand that, but you're you're you're.
We're still gonna have to make a ruling on it one way.
Yeah.
So it's the one foot. It sounds to me like it's the one foot piece.
And I I go back to the point that I was trying to make earlier, that if he put this addition. Along the White Pond Road and kept that setback constant.
Right.
It's a continuation of a nonconforming. That's to me what the special permit criteria are set for. Rather than putting in a huge nonconformance when it was just a little one before.
Right, that to me, that seems like a better alternative and see what the Conservation Commission says about it and. And go from there, because there's, no matter what he's doing, it's going to affect the upper zone.
But to, yeah.
No matter what, so it's a matter of, is it gonna be a little bit, or is it gonna be, you know, a little, a little more?
Yeah.
Because either way, compared to White Pond Road, the impact that happens when every time a car goes by, or the snow gets plowed into the river. You know, it's, it's gonna be a much greater impact than anything that he's proposing to put on. On that, so but that's up to the Conservation Commission to decide.
So what I'm hearing here is there's enough debate. That we need to get, in my mind anyways, a legal opinion as to. What that special permit. Judicial event really means. And then we'll move forward. And then the question is how we line that up with what conservation is offering. And so do we approve one design? Not one of the three, but just one of them.
I'm only asking for one, just to be fair, I'm only asking for the.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want, this is, this is wandering too much. This is not, the the applicant's app- application is for one design. The Conservation Commission will have to, um, that's a separate. You know, anything we do would be. Subject to their approval for what they go down the line. The 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 thing that we're looking at, as I understand it in my charge here. Is to make sure that I have interpreted what legal has told us and the building commissioner has told us. Uh, on an existing nonconformity, that a um. Exacerbation of it, const- that the board wants to make sure it does not constitute a variance. And that this is the a special permit is the appropriate mechanism for this. That's what I'm looking at right now. I I can't bring all this other stuff into it. I can't believe that the idea of other traffic coming in, if the road is extended in, that's just, uh, no, because i- if if they sold the road tomorrow. If it's privately owned, they could pave it over and and come into the um. Uh, into the homes with another form of egress, I don't know, you know, we we don't. But we have to be clear for me. I can't go on, I'm not looking to, I I just want to get. Know what I'm asking for with the with the board and.
I think you're right, Bill. I I think what you initially said was it. Let's Paul disagree, but I I think you're a hundred percent right. Your initial part of your statement was was dead on. That's what needs to be asked of, you know, get a legal interpretation on on what the ball's point, what did that change really mean? And how is it affect this particular decision?
Yeah, I I agree. Well, I'll find, um, and I'll 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 get, I can find out and I'll send out the paperwork we sent out originally with it too. I think we we, I'm. Um.
Yeah.
With the case, with the case information and everything.
And so you come back with that answer. If you want me to participate in asking Lisa, I certainly can do that. And then we come back and we rule on one. Design that he has.
Yep.
So, and that's, I think he's only proposing one, so I don't, just to clarify, we want to be choosing, we're voting on that one that he's putting.
And if we come up with a no. Is hypothetical, but if we come up with a no on his design, because he's too close to the road and we have reasons why we're concerned and we say no. Then what does he do? He can't come back because we gave him a negative vote for what, three months?
Two years.
Three years, excuse me.
And you can offer to allow him to withdraw.
But then he doesn't, then he's nowhere.
Well. That's a concern for us.
If if he chooses to withdraw. Then he's can. Come up with a new proposal and come back, right?
Yes.
In less than two years, yeah.
Yes. I think you should make that clear.
And can that be done after a vote by the board?
No.
Okay. And um can the Conservation Commission weigh in on this before we meet again to see what they're saying?
Well, the Conservation Agent uh brought this forward. Um, and has this is, has already been over this with the. Um, applicant, although they, I don't believe they've been to the uh to the bu- the commission. But the.
So that means that the person didn't, who brought it forward to us, didn't seem to have an issue with it.
That was, yeah, that was the Conservation Agent.
Okay.
Yeah, she was actually supposed to bring, she was supposed to do this tonight, but she's sick. Um. But uh, yeah, that was um the understanding.
And in terms of if it were a special permit, um. Do you have concerns on that front, or would it, you know, I mean, given those six criteria? With pretty, with, as far as I can tell, that like no adverse impacts. Um, would 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 that then, if it if it turns out that it is a special permit, would you then? Poten- you know, potentially approve that?
It would, it would be a debate we'd have to go through, and you hear how lively our debates are, unfortunately, but. The the issue on those six items as as they're listed there, uh. There, there's sort of this, in my mind, soft and gushy. And and those soft and gushies, it's hard to come up with anything anywhere against those six.
I mean, you could imagine definitely a traffic situation. Or utility situation. I mean, you know, they, I think they're they're pretty concrete.
Yes, yes, but, I mean. If if you're gonna put the house in the middle of an intersection, yeah, there that's a traffic flow and utilities. Unless there's a major sewer line underneath the middle of your property on some crazy right of way. The utilities can be moved, not a big deal. So literally, you cannot find a strong negative for any of those six.
But uh, yeah, um, okay, so but in my, I mean, in terms of. You know, I've obviously spent a lot of time kind of, you know, designing this with architect and going through the planning and, you know, we have. We have small children and we, you know, there's a lot of pressure on my side to 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 move forward with this. Um, so, you know, I appreciate the, you know, that that, you know, that you need to do it, you you need to do your job. Um. But also, you know, just to 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 take into account those six factors. Um, I and just understand kind of what the what the reasoning is.
I I I missed something. You're asking me something.
But to just understand kind of what the what the reasoning would be in relation to those six criteria if it were a special permit.
Well, the criteria i- 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 what they're determining is does the. Will the potential impacts outweigh the benefits? So in this case, what the board has to, if the, whatever they decide to uh do with the special permit. If they aside, decide to approve it, they're saying. They feel that the the positive impacts outweigh the negative. They've considered these components. If they choose to deny it, they would say, no, we think this is worse. This this makes the situation worse for the town, and we've considered this. Um, so that's the, it's intended to be, um. You know, have some flexibility in it. The purpose is not to deny. Uh, a special permit is to set a criteria that they can evaluate it with. Um, and in this case, um, you know, we i- i- it goes back to case law that we've we've had, this is. Within the last um year or so. Uh, but I can, I can um get a, so probably. I mean, if the board wants to continue it, continue it, continue it in a month, I'll have the answer and I'll have everything set up. And um we can go from there.
Right? I'm willing to set up a continuing if if you guys are willing to do that too.
I'd be fine voting today just to close, close it out, uh, but if everyone else would feel more comfortable continuing, I'm happy to. Continue, and I don't know, Bill, if we worked a vote today, if we could have a condition. That the council confirms special permit is the correct.
I would prefer not to do that. I I I I feel that this has come back as a. You know, a a responsibility in my office that I haven't delivered on, where if, I guess, where this is not. Of um sufficient.
I'm gonna come soon.
So I will, um. Reach out and and I will um provide counsel with everything and and the building commissioner, and we'll get something for you before the next meeting.
Okay, the next meeting date, Bill?
Next meeting date is. Let me see. July, uh, January twenty-second, unless that is. So hold it. Uh, January twenty-second.
We already have one case at that date, right?
What's that?
We already have one hearing that date, right?
Do we?
Yeah, it was continued from the last hearing.
When's, when's Mountain Loser King Day? I don't, I haven't got a calendar.
It's the Monday before.
The Monday before, okay, great, thanks.
So I made that formal, do I get a motion? Continue.
Oh, uh, just, yeah, yeah, I'm not sure how to put the wording together on this one.
Just to get for continuance to resolve legal question.
What what Paul just said.
All right, do I get a second?
Second.
All right, so Jerry, in favor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Paige?
Yep.
Brad, you're the alternate, right?
The alternate, yeah.
All right, so we'll skip you. Leslie?
Yes.
All right, so that can, and I'm a yes. So we're, we're making a continuance of this till our January twenty-second meeting, Dominic. Apologize for the delay, but we're trying to do this right.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
So with that, we have anything else on the agenda? I didn't see anything. Bill, is there anything?
Uh, no, I don't uh have anything else, um. Nothing, no, no, nothing, just getting ready for the holidays with everybody and.
Hey, getting ready for tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's an update, Bill. We should share that, right?
Which one?
Leslie and my meeting with you. Four o'clock.
Tomorrow? Yeah, well, yeah, well, we met um last week or it was, I think it was last week. And uh, just about uh putting the finishing touches on the firearms draft. Um, I think we could probably finish it tomorrow.
I didn't have to leave at six thirty, I have. Company.
So what what happened was, Bill gave me the draft as it existed two weeks ago. And I may. And I made comments. I think there were about a hundred or a hundred and fifty comments. And so now we're going through it one by one. We finished the definition, that was one page. And we got one page into the five-page. Bylaw draft. So we got.
It's a good, but it's a good product. It's no nonsense. It was uh done. I think when it's done, everybody be happy with it. It's got the the uh, we consulted everybody we could think of on it. Paul had some good, excellent upgrades with the some of the stuff we've done. Um, it's a good, it's a good, it'll be a good piece of work.
Public survey?
No.
Nope, no public survey?
No. No, this, you know, the surveys. I mean, we have the survey monkey, but on this one. I I I think a public hearing would be. Yeah, well, the public hearing is typical process, but.
I was just wondering where all the, you said you got a hundred comments. I was wondering where the hundred and fifty comments came from.
What's that? No editorial comments from Paul.
Oh.
Basically, I I looked at it and it was one of my professional reports, you know, on a on a failure investigation. And did did you mean to put it in passive tense? Did you mean to have three negatives in one sentence? Did you mean to leave out the action verb, stuff like that?
Oh, I I'm I'm well aware of it.
Oh, yeah, from that other one.
Sorry, can I drop off the call? Is that uh?
Oh, sure.
Appreciate your time. Good evening.
Evening.
And that's all we have, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
That's all we have tonight.
Okay.
All right, so then I need another motion.
Okay, I'll move the adjourn the meeting.
All in favor, we just wave at each other here, eh?
Right.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, everybody. Happy holidays.
Paul, Leslie, I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, sure.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you.